I'm gonna call the property subcommittee to order, please. We're gonna... we got... we got... we don't have to take attendance because all three of us are here. Now, public speak time. Is anybody here who wants to talk on a subject that's not on the agenda? What's on the agenda is the Pleasant Street Mill project and the Parsons... Parsons Street School. Okay? So, the first order of business that we're gonna have, we're gonna take up, is the Pleasant Street Mill owners and the city for the easements that are gonna... gonna occur. Does anybody wanna talk? Just hold up your hand. Jessica Allen, our planner, will talk.
Yes, if I could give you just some background and some briefing before you head into the documents. I'm here tonight with two of the mill owners, Mike Michon from Mill 180 and Will Bundy from the Eastworks building. Also, the fire chief, Dave Motters, is here as well to speak on this if you need me to. Why we're here tonight is, we are here to talk about the proposed easement agreement between the city and the five mill owners on Pleasant Street. There's individual easement agreements for each of the mill owners along the property. This is to allow the city to finalize construction for infrastructure improvements that have been funded through the Mass Works program. You have received three packets of correspondence from myself on this project. One, you received a memo in May giving you a briefing of the project as well as just to let you know that the easements were coming. You received a second packet in June, which that was the first draft of the easement agreements that was drafted by the mill owners with their attorney. The third packet which you received, which also includes a redlined version, has the edits that were proposed and accepted by the mill owners. The changes were proposed by the mayor with review of the city attorney. We held a meeting, all of us, a few weeks ago, and we came to agreement on all of the proposed changes. So, that's what you have before you tonight is an agreement that all have come to agreement on. Like I said, there's five separate agreements. Paragon is not included in the packet as they do not have frontage on that side of the... of the project area. They don't have frontage on the bike stall side. So, they do not have an easement agreement in the packet. The rest of the mill owners along Pleasant Street all have a separate easement agreement with the city. Just to provide some background to those in the room who may not know where this project is coming from, but this last year, the city collaborated with Pleasant Street Mill owners to apply for a grant through the Mass Works program. We received $2.75 million to be used for infrastructure improvements to address some public safety concerns. One is to address with some bearings and electrical lines and also to replace water infrastructure. And I actually have copies of the letters that were submitted by the fire chief and the board of public works as part of the grant proposal that outlines all of the safety issues that needed to be addressed and why we supported the project. And again, we have the fire chief here if he needs additional information on what the public safety issues are. So, just to give you some background on what the Mass Works program is, it's a competitive state grant program that allows municipalities to seek funding for public infrastructure. And they really have two categories. The infrastructure needs to support housing production or it needs to be used for economic development and job creation. They have a specific focus for town center revitalization and mill redevelopment. And they specifically like projects that are using public dollars to support private infrastructure. So, given this project, we were a great fit for the program. And we did this very competitive grant program, and we did receive funding. I do wanna note that the grant that we did submit was not for the... we did not receive the full amount that we submitted for. Our full grant included also parking infrastructure, which is desperately needed by the mill owners so that they can reach the full build out for their mills. We are gonna be moving forward with the grant application in September to try to receive funding for that second component. However, these easement agreements do address parking. So, I wanna be clear that this easement agreement is dealing with the full project scope, but we are funded right now to deal with the electrical and the water. So, to accomplishments to date on this project and what we've been doing since we received notification last year, the city and the mill owners have been working really hard with Lumiko to design the underground electrical system. And we have final designs as of last week. And that has been an extremely interesting procedure to go through, but we are finally there with our final designs. Each building owner has committed to put new investment and upgrade each of their individual buildings to meet this new infrastructure from the electrical company. We had a meeting... the mayor called a meeting in March. And we had full consensus from all of the building owners that they would be willing to put investment in the buildings. So, they are aware that there is gonna be building infrastructure investment that they need to do, and they are willing to do it. Right now, we're at 100% design for the documents. All of the survey work has been completed. The full scope of the project for water, sewer, stormwater, parking, plantings, and all of the other amenities is completely done. And all of that work has been paid by the mill owners themselves. The city has not put any money into those design works, so that's been fully funded by them. And this is where the partnership comes in between the public dollars and the private investment. The project has already been permitted through the Conservation Commission, so we're good to go on that. The city has executed state contracts between the Mass Works program and the city as of last month. And so, that is... that's set. And now, we're at the point where we're ready to finalize our bid documents and go up to bid. We'd like to get shovels in the ground within the next couple of months. That's our hope. We can't get shovels in the ground until this easement agreement is adopted by the council and finalized. So, this is... this is a time-sensitive issue. The Mass Works program itself, it's kind of a use it or lose it program. If we don't use it, then we lose the money. So, there's... if we don't move forward, if we get stuck, there's a potential that this project would no longer be. So, getting to the easements themselves, the documents, do you have any... do you have any questions about the background?
The only question I have on a document for these, but they've been checked by the town attorney, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, the packet that you received in July provides several bits. We have a construction easement that gives the city the right to go into the property... the mill owner's property to do the construction with the public dollars. It gives the city rights to construct and maintain utilities, drainage, lighting, and landscaping. There's an entire section on parking easements. The way that this has been negotiated is that the city would use the public dollars to build the public infrastructure. The mill owners have agreed to maintain this public parking from now on. So, that's where the agreement has come into place. And the rest of it is really in case one of the parties messes up and sort of what's the procedure for recapturing dollars or negotiating some issues that may happen. But it's a fairly simple easement document. There's maps attached to each one of the easements that's associated with that. And that's the specific exhibit that goes with that easement.
You have... anybody want to... the councilors want to talk?
I don't really have any questions.
Could I... I wanna recognize Justin Cobb, the president of the city council.
Thank you. What I'd like to say is, as the district councilor, this is basically because of our previous vote on this project. I see this as... the bottom line is a no-brainer. I'm actually fully supportive of trying to push this along. As you heard from the testimony here, from additional testimony that people speak tonight, that all the ducks are in line here. And so, the only thing holding it up would be actually a city council vote. The last thing I have to check into, which I will do tomorrow if you decide to vote on this and present this tomorrow night, is if it requires a two-thirds vote. We may be short a couple of members tomorrow night's meeting. So, I've got to weigh whether I wanna risk it or not based on that. But I see... I'm fully in support of this. I see this just the... the infrastructure improvements we're doing, eliminating overhead lines, bringing them down, connecting the... repairing and upgrading the water lines. The partnership between our private milling owners and the public funds. There's nothing about this project that says it's not a good thing to go. And I just wanted to relay that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanna... I just wanna say that thank you to everybody that's been doing all the hard work and putting all these ducks in rod. I think that's a great job. And I think this is gonna benefit everybody and not just the mill owners or the users. I think this is gonna be, for the public safety and the citizens, this is gonna be a good thing. So, I'm 100% behind this. And I'm fine to move it right now if you guys don't have any questions.
I don't have any problem with it, but I... the thing about this I like the best is the utility lines are gonna be buried. I think that's a good step because you go to different places around here where all the utilities are underground, the whole community looks a lot better. And we need an awful lot of help in this town. Okay, I'm ready to move this issue. Do you want...
One suggestion. There's a motion that has to come before the council, and the committee may need help in crafting that motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
And is it gonna be...
Why'd you make a motion?
Whether it's five separate ones or... or this can be one together?
Oh.
Right.
Okay. Well, sure.
I think one would be a good idea.
One would be sufficient, I think. Go ahead.
I'm gonna... we accept this to move before the full council?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass it unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the next subject where we have all the visitors waiting for us. The request for the mayor to dispose of two parcels of property at the former Parsons Street School. Now, with anybody that wants to talk, just hold up your hand. We'll recognize you one at a time. I think it's very important that you people came here. And I, for one, is gonna try to respect all your wishes. I saw your wish list to begin with. I don't know if it can be added to or not. I personally feel this is such a big issue that maybe we should be studied further before we declare surplus. That's my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of the property staff or the members feel about it. But one thing that I'm gonna say right now, you people have been taking it down the chin on there, on affordable housing. I don't wanna say, "No more affordable housing in there, period." And if they try that, I think we could have a revolution, okay? And you people, so far, with your 15 ideas, I thought they were a pretty great idea. But... so, anybody wanna talk besides me?
Yeah.
Please. Just state your name.
Yeah, my name is Eric Kuhlman. I've been a lifelong resident of East Hampton and as of April 2nd, a very proud homeowner of the state Parsons Street. I bought the house right across from where Parsons Village is coming in, and I couldn't be happier or couldn't be more proud of where I am. I've had many conversations with my wonderful new neighbors over the last few months. And I think one thing that needs to really be conveyed, and I think you stated it pretty articulately, Mr. Sackowski, is that I think that the idea of putting more housing into that neighborhood is a very sensitive issue. I think the folks in the neighborhood do feel that they have been somewhat earned or at least maybe their wishes were not quite fully realized in the last go-around. Having said that, I don't think that those of us who are here tonight are gonna completely stick our heads in the sand and say, "No, no, no, absolutely nothing can happen here." I think that if we all collaboratively work together to come up with a solution that best benefits the city and best benefits the neighborhood, I think... and I think we could do that here tonight. I think that if some housing is going to be to go into that property... Jessica, is that correct, that the front parcel is its own neighborhood business?
The front... the first 80 feet of that parcel is its own neighborhood business. And then, the back half of the larger of the two parcels is residential.
I think... I think what we would like to see is not that the whole parcel goes up to bid to the highest bidder, but rather go through the R and B process. And I appreciate that you stated that this whole process is going pretty quickly. And maybe we do need to study it a little bit further. I think that's... I think you're on the right track with that. One of the things that I know that I personally would appreciate in my neighborhood is the ability to walk to a convenience store. I know, I mean, most of us will remember a time when New City did have neighborhood... did have businesses in the neighborhood where you could go to the laundromat or you could get a sandwich or something like that. So, any sort of new development in that school, I think, should have some sort of business on the lower levels and housing in the upper levels. I think the Eastworks model is a perfect... is a perfect paradigm. I think we've talked about preservation of the historical integrity of the neighborhood being an important thing. And I know the state had stated a couple of years ago that East Hampton should pursue that New City be designated a historical neighborhood. Even though that hasn't quite happened, I still think that that sort of mentality should be in place, that any effort to preserve the school, if possible, should be made. At the same time, I do understand that it's a very old building and, you know, maybe a new developer might have to, if the sale is made, might have to take that building down and put up a new structure. I think another part of the R and B would be that whatever the new structure be, also adhere to the historical integrity of the current Parsons Street School. So, I think a mixed-usage building would be wonderful. I think that market rate housing is definitely the way to go. I do agree with you. I think that if there is a big push for affordable housing units, I think that they should be limited. And I'd like to see if they could possibly be designated for specific populations that I don't think were necessarily catered to in the Parsons Village design. Just for example, like elderly... affordable elderly housing. Or affordable housing for residents with disabilities, I think, could potentially be a plus for our neighborhood. Would increase it ever as we run into it. I think that market rate housing is probably the way to go. But if affordable housing is something that is a sticking point, I think that could be a solution. I think we all could potentially live with. And I do feel very strongly that some preservation of green space in that area should be there. I mean, we're very tightly populated in that neighborhood as it is. I could... I mean, I guess my vision potentially could be, in a sense of compromise or in just the sense of making it all work for everybody so everybody's happy, is that a structure would exist on Parsons Street, be it the school or maybe something close to the street. Maybe one other structure for housing, perhaps on the Main Avenue side, that would have some room for parking in the back and then preserve the rest of the space as green space, either a municipal park or a park that would be maintained by the new property owner. I also think that in the new structure, I think it's important for us to have some sort of community space, some sort of community room designated. I think that would be a wonderful gesture to the neighborhood. So, it'd be a room or a space within a potential new structure for the residents of the new establishment and also for members of the community to use. It was talked about of maybe establishing some sort of library. I don't know if a full library could potentially go in that... go in that space, but maybe some sort of smaller reading room, some sort of smaller branch of the Emily Wilson Library could certainly be something that's feasible. I think that's something the volunteers would be willing to take on. So, I think... I think we all need to sort of collaboratively work together and think about how we can come up with a solution that best works for everyone. So, the city will be happy with the end result. A potential developer will be happy with, you know, taking on a project and be something that they could profit off of. And for those of us who are in the neighborhood, to have a solution that works really well for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin.
What I'd like to say about the property considered is that when you look at the historical nature of New City, at the time, that's what we call now smart growth. You have a neighborhood business, you had everything in walkability. You had... I was gonna say a neighborhood, a decent going year that was sustainable. And we've eroded that over time. The city's done that on our own. And when I look at that piece of property that's left in Parsons Street, that is still the anchor of that neighborhood. And that's why it's so important to do this right. It's not to actually skip over things. It's not to just tomorrow, put it up for sale for auction. Because this property is gonna build the foundation of that neighborhood for long after all of us are gone here. And that's the importance of what you're hearing from the vision from the people in the neighborhood. I see it as, as I'm walking down the hallway here into this meeting room, that there's that potential to add on to the... our art blocks by using that as a sculpture garden and the green space also. That there... that space is so valuable to such a high-density groupie there. It provides meeting space. It provides space for people to put up a Big Ten, have a barbecue or to actually hold up a neighborhood tax sale. It's that important to try to preserve and try to do something with it rather than just fiddle for housing. And I do wanna be clear, in my mind, when we're talking about market rate or affordable housing, we're talking about owner-occupied.
Yes.
And I wanna be clear, if I do wanna... I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
No, thank you. Thank you.
And...
I missed that point. Yes, thank you.
Just to be sure on that form. But I'm... I wanna listen to what the neighbors have to say. Because I'm like you, I wanna follow what their vision is for their neighborhood.
One thing that I like, I like the idea of the green space and the park. For a simple reason, even when they were doing across the street their affordable housing, was talking about there was no parking. And they said, "Oh, yeah, you can walk down to the one down on Pleasant Street for only a while or so like that," which I didn't think was right, to tell you the truth, because with those units going in over there, there's definitely a need for parking. There's very few amenities for the taxpayers in this community likes that. And I mean, we should be working forward to bring more of those online.
I'll end with saying this, is that I find the statement that there's no ominous purpose to this property curious. I've been a councilor for 10 years, and for every year, I've talked about the snow piles in the back lot. And I was always told that no other place to put it. And all of a sudden, it's located somewhere else. I just wanna put that out there, that that isn't a bigger problem as it may seem to be. And I still think that because of its central location, but I leave it up to the neighborhood to decide if this property does have ominous leaves. And part of that is why I take the cautious approach, not willing to rush into this. It's that important that we get this right.
I agree. I agree. That's why I said I think there should be a further study, an in-depth study, between the council and the administration and maybe someone in the neighborhood involved in it. And I... oops. Go ahead. I recognize you. Go ahead. Please give your name.
Sure, Kirsten Morris, 12 Federal Street. I think when looking at the Parsons Street School parcel, there are a lot of kids in our neighborhood. And I think it's also important to remember that we are gonna be getting 100-plus new residents. And I think some of those people are bringing children. Right now, the only... or the closest park to walk to is the Mill River sort of area there. And I actually have a small child and took her and a friend down there. It's very dangerous to try to cross Berry Street. The traffic cannot see you crossing. And so, I think residents are not encouraged, you know, to go up to Pleasant Street. I certainly... it was a haul, you know, a little kid. So, I think preserving that and creating a community space. I understand that there is this just great push to put more housing in, to put more housing in. And I feel like it's not... the mayor is really driving this project. I mean, it has now come up that he's potentially looking at auctioning it off at this point. You know, like things get said. And so, hopefully, that's not the case. But I would really like for the process to slow down and for a study to be done to look at the best use of this property for the neighborhood, given the fact that we do have a lot of young families moving in. We'd like to have more. That will help the school system and will help the community of East Hampton. It would also be really nice to have some neighborhood business. It would be nice to know that when I run out of milk, I don't have to get in my car and drive down, you know, to the 7-Eleven or the pride station. And I think that there are enough people in the community of New City to support, you know, a small convenience store or something of that nature. Even perhaps even a coffee shop or, you know, a type situation as well.
The only thing I'm sorry about is that they closed Parsons Street School as an elementary school. For a simple reason, my youngest daughter went there. And for the other two, she got a better education in the elementary grades at Parsons Street than the other two did anywhere else.
I agree with you 100%.
They did a hell of a good job there for years. Yes?
So, it's like Councilor Hagan, I wasn't able to attend the first meeting, but I will echo what some of the other councillors have said about, I think the community that lives around there really should have a prevailing voice. And I also believe that we should slow the process down. I know I was in a talk with a planner today, and she suggested I take a ride around, which I did. Now, even just something I thought of as I came in, there's probably a myriad of reasons why we couldn't do it. But I went by our community center, and I was saying maybe we could move our community center over to Parsons to have a real community thing with all that land in the back and have a real community center owned by the city. And I don't see there's any real reason the city has to necessarily dispose of this property. As far as what this young woman said is, you know, the mayor's indicated he's no longer gonna be here. I know we have two mayoral candidates, and I think they should have the input, not the current mayor of this going forward. I mean, we... and to say that, you know, where the heating bills are coming up, well, we've heated this building for how many decades now? I mean, the school department has heated it. I don't see a burning reason that we have to suddenly sell it before winter because the heating bills are gonna be there. I think we should take our time. We've owned it since, well, you've probably owned it on... I don't know how long you've been around, but, you know, was that built around 1900 or something?
Yeah, I thought when he come up with that $30,000 figure for heat was a little outrageous. I didn't think it was...
Well, as I said, I know the school department has been heating it, and I mean, it's the same pot of money. And again, not that I'm for... I think most of the councillors know I'm usually on the conservative side of spending. But I just think we... it's such a vital piece of property for that neighborhood and for the city that I think we really should take our time and maybe come up with a committee of residents and councillors or maybe some of the planning department and really come up with a comprehensive use for it, whether it's a city use or some of the mixed use. I mean, but I, you know, I do think this community has really been put on with a lot of different things. It's not just the housing. I know it goes back to some of the smells around the sewage plant that were in that...
Were they put up for the filter beds for the years?
Exactly.
Dragged down there?
I think we owe it to them to really do something nice for that particular precinct.
Yes, Karen?
And just commenting to Councilor Hagan, I have contacted our existing people to actually get the building ready for the winter. So, figuring that the process is not going to be, you know, a very quick process. And in the meantime, get ready so we won't be heating it and that type of thing for winter itself. It's a little warm.
So, that's have heat in it? Because we're still gonna have heat in the building. We have to.
No, they're gonna drain the building.
Oh, you're gonna drain it and you're gonna let all the plastic fall off the walls? That isn't too smart. You have to maintain a little bit of heat in that building, not much. You'd have to... you'd have to be in the high 40s or something like that. And I think it could be done without too much money. And the thing of it is, I don't think you should just warehouse the building and let it fall apart like the pump house out there on Hendrick Street. And what they did on North Amster Street, where the water... water... sewer department was for years, was outrageous. And the thing of it is, we don't take care of good stuff in this town. The infrastructure and stuff in this town, and it has to change. You take a look at our roads and the rest of the stuff, take South Amster Street. I don't wanna get involved with it no more. We're on one issue. But the thing of it is, we cannot... we have to have heat in that building for the winter or it's gonna deteriorate. And then, you're gonna get less for it. And it's gonna be a study and everything else.
As I said, I think we've been heating it, I would assume, for... since the 19... early 1900s. I mean, I was getting what a few more months of keeping at a minimum heat is gonna do.
Over the years, the town put a lot of money into that building. That gets me to fall apart.
Right, you're still looking out and see what needs to be done.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I know you're running for mayor. I'm sorry. Nancy.
I'm the other one. Nancy Sykes.
Yeah, I got her.
I live at 32 Mother Street. And I'm currently chair of the school committee. And I just wanted to add that in the last couple of years with the building, the school was not being used for alternative school or was not being used to take care of any activities. The school committee did heat the building. Now, I do not know, I mean, the school... you know that the school committee has turned Parsons Street over to the city. And so, I know that the bill to heat it, councilman, was not cheap.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, you know, it did cost money and it was being... But I also know that there was discussion about we didn't want to freeze it. We didn't want to prepare it. I've done that to a house before, and it's sort of sad. But I think that what I am asking tonight is, is it the mayor's office that makes that decision about how to winterize this property? Who makes that decision?
Since the school has surplus, it now belongs in the executive branch.
Right.
To drive that. And they generally will not ask their departmental experts what's the best course of action, the building commissioner.
Okay.
And such.
But it is the executive.
He's gonna come and just view it. He's gonna come and, you know, tour the building, see how to keep it safe and protected and at, you know, lowest expenses in the city.
But it is now out of the hands... the city council doesn't decide anything about the winterizing of the building or anything like that. It's in the hands of the executive.
Correct.
Anybody else nearby?
The mentions of Millside Park, just in discussion, I think, are... I just... I need... I think those really need to be brought to light because that's a perfect example of something that the city has really done magnificently well over the last 10 years or so, taken a... taken a space. I mean, huge Clarity parking lot, let's face it, was kind of dumped 15 years ago. And Millside Park has been developed into this wonderful community space where literally half the town goes every Friday night to listen to music, it seems. I don't see why that same sort of magic couldn't happen on the Parsons Street property. I don't see why that same sort of magic couldn't happen on the Parsons Street property. I think, I think that's the sort of vision that we need to be taking going forward, and not necessarily just hammering in more housing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, in my time, I've been through here 67 years. Before I moved here, most of the homes were rental, and in New City, it was a dump. My children were ashamed to say they came from New City. But as people are owning the buildings and taking care of them, now they're proud they came from the city. That's only, and rental means a lot, a big difference. So I'm hoping if we do go something, let's go on the street.
Well, I used to go to Chaltenham Bakery, Crowley's Drug Store.
Yeah.
And I had a few hamburgers at Bill's, 2:00 in the morning.
I think it's a real integral part of the history in East Hampton, too, and for let it, to let the city, let it go just for affordable housing, community housing. Any kind of housing. I know they were saying NIBs, but I think we all know this question for affordable, but that's neither here nor there. I think it should definitely remain a green space with the building. Someone can mention it. Laboratory, of some sort, and keep the green space, I think, residents of New City.
You do need some amenities down there, and.
Yeah. I mean, if you remember Bill's and everything, then you remember the ice rink and the playground.
Swimming pool.
Swimming pool. I mean, it was a wonderful place to grow up.
We had a waiting pool down there one time, too, didn't you?
Yes, we did.
And let that go to help.
Yeah.
And we let the waiting pool at, on Pleasant Street go, too.
So it was a wonderful space.
So our forefathers did a better job taking care of people than we did. Okay, Justin, what else?
There are a couple thoughts as I'm listening to the neighborhood's vision for this property. First is, the subcommittee could actually end a certain discussion, vote on not to auction the property off. If that were the will of the committee, that's something the vote that we can take, and then we don't have to have that discussion again. Then we're completely focused on RFP. On the RFP, and this blends into the need for, and I look at our city planner here, because I know this is going to end up on her shoulders, the, how do we come about to a price for a minimum sale price? And the idea with a study, that can be part of it, where they provide some level of, I'm going to say this rough number, I'm not going to quote it, rough number, to help us build that, and provide that into the decision on that, what is the minimum sale price we're going to run? Because right now, how valuable is that property? And it's, how do you put a number on something that is so critical to the sustainability of that neighborhood?
Well, the other thing of it is, too, for the assessed value, I mean, the figures for the assessed value, by that is a market value, and what isn't, doesn't take the community into consideration either.
It's important to think about.
Mr. Runde.
I just, my, my observation of the process of RFP is that the bigger, the bigger side of the equation isn't what the city gets for the property in terms of dollars and cents, it's what they get that integrates the ideas that the community is talking about. So I, I think how the RFP goals are framed, I think that ultimately, it should be about what's the level of open space, what's, what are the characteristics that the neighborhood gets, and, and capacity to deliver on that vision is more important than how much money someone puts down. If, if you look at what someone puts down, and then they don't deliver, it just seems that, that you really lose out. And, and we have enough experience in this town with, with all sorts of big ideas and money down and not delivered. I think it's really critical that you frame the vision, and then you see if people with real capacity come forward to say yes, they can do it.
I'm going to just, just reply, so, you know, we use the, actually, RFP process to weigh a criteria, and so that way we actually, if they meet all the criteria, they get a lower price if they.
And I'm just saying that my sense is that you could, you could take that RFP process a little bit more in, in the idea of the vision that you'd like to see fulfilled, because I don't, I haven't seen the RFP process really demand that much of the people that come in and take over the property.
Yes, please.
Is there any way that the council could say that we're not going to sell this property? We're going to, we want it to go back to the neighborhood, and we want it? I guess my feeling is this can really, this is, really has the ability to tip New City one way or the other. If you were to put in a really great park, and even a mediocre park, you know, a community space, that would create a whole different feel than if it ends up with housing. And so is there any way that the council has the ability to say, you know what, we're going to, as this gentleman just said, we're going to look at the longer vision, we're not going to look at the short-term $15,000 tax money that we're going to get if we sell it, and we're not going to look at the sale price as it is today, we're going to look at the, you know, 20 years out, what does this make New City look like? And what is the actual value there? Because that will then in turn, you know, increase people who move into the neighborhood, increase home values, which will increase the tax base. And ultimately, that $15,000 of tax money that the mayor is so excited about will be rehooed. It will just be in a bit of a different way.
I think, I mean, I think that's exactly what the RFP process is. It's us setting criteria that have to be met in order to release the property. And so if we have a good, solid set of criteria, and, I mean, the city doesn't have the ability to be a developer, unfortunately. It'd be great if we had some capacity to do that, but we just don't. So that's where having somebody else fix the building and, and do some of the improvements that people are talking about, that's where the rubber meets the road, and that would be, I think, through the RFP process, and having a really strong set of guidelines that guide that RFP to kind of make it acceptable to, you know, the future vision.
You know what? Just like me, it's like I said, I brought up about a study. I don't feel like this issue should be rushed, because we've got a lot of things to take into consideration, and, you know, and.
Well, just as a point of reference, you know, when, when we did, you know, the.
Hendrick Street?
I mean, all, we've done, how many, how many times have we done surplus property? We've done, I feel like I've done five of them. And generally, we do an RFP, and generally, we take our time making sure that we, I mean, I know for Memorial Hall, like, it was, we took a good amount of time, and I don't see why we need to rush.
That's right.
Sure.
That we don't sell the property at this time?
Second. Olive, you hear that?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, what's, what's exactly before us is that we declared surplus.
That was a clear surplus.
What we're saying is that we don't want to auction off the property at this time.
Okay.
That's a good idea, too.
But I don't know if it's in front of us to auction off the property. So I don't think that, that's not within our, I mean, how about we just, right now, auctioning off the property is not within our purview. Declaring it surplus is within our purview. So at this point, we're not, but we don't need to make a motion not to declare it surplus, we just don't bring it to the council. I mean, that's, that's what we do, so we just don't bring it to the council yet.
Could you just forward, make a recommendation that a study be conducted?
I mean, my, my personal feeling, the way that we've done it for, you know, since I've been on, I mean, I've been on property a really long time, we are the ones that generally do the study. You know, we, we go through and tour the property, Justin, you've been through this process with us, and, and we make sure that we talk to the stakeholders, and we at least come up, and if we, if we need assistance, then we generally go and get assistance. But, I mean, I feel like that's our job, is to help determine that.
I just don't think the process should be rushed at all. I think I, because it definitely, there's definitely so much on the table here, and we have to take our time with this, and be very, very careful, because it can affect the whole neighborhood. Yes, yes.
And since I heard in the vision of the neighborhood, historic nature of the property, open space recreation, I know we, you know, are leaning on this one now, is there potential to use CPA funds, the study that we use for the development of that property? You don't have to say no, I mean, seriously, but that might be something that would be hopeful to the committee.
We couldn't do it for a market study of the building. We could do it in terms of, if there was an open space, but I'm in the process of working an open space plan right now. And we're doing, part of it is an analysis of equity to access to open space. And, and I can give you the numbers right now of the average walking distance to open space in New City is failing compared to our other neighborhoods. It's a much longer walk for folks in New City to get to any open space amenities. So that's, that's our plan. We don't, I don't, we don't need to use CPA funds to do that.
Okay.
But, go ahead, no, go ahead. I was just going to say that if it was to go out to RFP, it could go out to an RFP almost in reverse. We have in the past asked people to develop property and offered them an option to go to CPA for money, to almost pay them to help us implement what we've designed. Because like you said, we're not developers. We can't, we can't maintain a recreational building unless, you know, anyone called John, because. Right. Unless there's a nonprofit who's going to step up to the table to maintain it, or a volunteer group in the city, or there's a, you have to remember, as private developers, they're business people. So they're not, you know, they, they want to do what's right for the community, but they also have to make a living. So we have to craft something that's going to be balanced enough that somebody is going to want to come in, provide us with amenities that we're looking for, but at the same time, be able to walk out with, without having, you know, a debt in their pocket from doing it. And I think it's important to remember that there's a balance to that.
It sounds like there's a, there's a decent desire to keep the building, though.
I believe so.
I mean, that, I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
No, I would say there is a decent desire, I don't want to speak for everybody, I think there is a very decent desire to keep the building, but not at the expense of having to go to affordable slash low.
I would just, I just want to, I feel like I want to say something to the people that have come tonight. I feel like I would caution, and I know that it's been, it's been tough with the, with the 40B project and everything, but I think if you start railing against affordable housing from the get-go, then it's going to, it's going to, people are going to think, well, what exactly are you against? And so I just, I just want to say that, because I, like, I'm, I'm a firm believer in affordable housing, and the way that the state has redefined the affordability guidelines, you know, like, many teachers that I work with and their families could, you know, move into affordable housing. And I feel like that stigma is, is a little biased in a way. And I, so I would say, I understand, but maybe the semantics of it are a little harsh.
I agree with what you're saying, and I mean, having been through the Parsons Street project and held my tongue, and it's not really about the low income, it's about the density. But along with the density, there is a density, basically, free pass when you get into the low-income and affordable housing.
Right.
And so I think that's my concern. I will also state that I am an affordable housing homeowner, and if you were told that you were going to come in and put in homeownership for affordable housing as the plan is for Everett Street with the Habitat project, I would be much more supportive of that, but given the project that was just allowed to go in at, on Parsons Street, Parsons Street Village, that's all rental property, and I think that's a very.
Which, I mean, unfortunately, you know, I, you know, one of the, I'm kind of a loser, and I read up on this stuff, when it comes to planning and that stuff. And, you know, unfortunately, right now, in the state of our economy, there's a, there's a dire need for rental properties because of the amount of foreclosures that have happened in people's financial state. And there's a shortage in Massachusetts of rental property that is driving the costs of rental property through the roof. So I understand that, that, you know, it can be cast that renters don't care about their neighborhood, or renters, but renting can be a really good step to homeownership in the future, and, you know, so again, I'm not trying to, and, and for me, I feel like, I don't, I, you know, I've hung out at the Parsons Street School, a good friend of mine lived next door for many years. I, I don't see that as a huge affordable housing magnet. I, I think, I'm on topic. I, I think that probably, you know, what, if, if a developer was looking at that, they'd probably look to put in, you know, maybe a few units of condo, and probably market-rate condo. And that's, that's what I thought of off the top of my head. I don't know if it's viable for commercial property, I don't know, but.
Councilor Hagan.
I would just like to say, I think, again, I hear what Councilor Durby's saying, but I think the residents have every right to express their beliefs. I think that's what this process is all about in this country's own.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, I wouldn't, you know, downplay what they have, that's their belief that they're saying.
By no means was doing that, I was just.
Well, I just got that, kind of that.
Interpretation.
Interpretation.
Yes.
Mrs. Hagan, you have your hand up.
Yeah.
Can I recognize you?
You can. I'm hu, I'm a huge NIMBY person. I think this, this is their neighborhood, this is where their American dream is, it's what they believe. But I also think the city's got to slow down a little bit, because we're not looking at our schools. You, you've already got Parsons coming in, and that could be, what are their, 48 units? If everybody has two children, in one fell swoop, 100 kids are going to hit our school system. Do we have the capacity? Usually, several homes are built, and, you know, every year, you have to absorb. All of a sudden, 100, and you don't know the ages of these children, and they could be all early elementary or whatever. And do you have the capacity to hold these children in school and to continually have more and more families without considering where are these kids going to go to school? I, I just fear, I think classrooms have to be kept at a low number for the kids, and I think that's why this whole project has to be slowed down, so these folks can be heard, and the city also can stop and say, all right, if we do this, what's the ripple effect of that? I'm just concerned about young children being in school. We have, that was a huge issue when we went through the meetings for the Parsons Village, and we were told that we could not discuss that particular issue because it was 40B, it was off the table, it was non-discussable. I asked over and over again, will be in, extra children will be in school, and I was told repeatedly, that is a topic that cannot be discussed because of 40B.
And that's correct.
End of discussion. And it impacted, how scary can you be?
But that's, it's the, it's the state law. You are not allowed to consider school-aged children when considering a 40B project. End of story.
The registration level came, it's like.
I understand, but it's the state law. I understand, but it's the state law.
Yes, and then this is now, this is another discussion we don't mind.
You know, you know, folks, we've, we've been around this issue quite a bit tonight, and I think it's time for the subcommittee to make a decision.
I don't think we should vote, I think we just keep it open, and we just keep working on it.
Okay.
I mean, and I think we take our time.
Yeah.
When would you continue the discussion? Do you?
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting.
Which would be?
January?
To him.
After the heating season starts.
But I mean, you know, like, typically, what we would do as a committee is we would go to the site, and we would walk the site.
Sure. I have keys to the building, if you want to get into the building, we can do that.
So I'll let Dawn coordinate that.
Yeah.
We can work with you to get us over there.
Try to find me. Okay, folks, thank you for coming, and I appreciate all your input here this evening.
Thank you.
Will there be more open discussions?
Absolutely. Lots.
How will we find out?
Property Subcommittee is announced, all of our meetings are, would be announced by Dawn at the regular city council meetings, and they'll be posted in the hallway and in the paper.
Do you post it on the website? Do you post it to the city events?
Of course.
Yes.
You know, I mean, August is still a vacation month and everything, so you don't know.
I have, it was this close, my, my, so, lucky I.
We can get together.
It's hard to pass.